So I think we will call to call to order the Evansville Vandenberg Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting. It is four thirty PM on March fourteenth. Introduction of forum and visitors. Do you have any visitors in the audience today? But we have some, but not here to speak, just for just to watch and just to enjoy. Correspondence, we have a folder with correspondence. It's getting passed around. Notice there are lots of five star ratings in there, so that is fantastic. Lots of good commentary about the experiences folks are having while they're visiting the EVPL, and those are always good to see. Consent agenda. Everybody was presented with a copy of the consent agenda, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So.
Second motion and second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Governance, North Park renovation bid proposal. Buildings and grounds committee, don't really know that who the chairman really technically, so me.
Is you. This is not, this is not good news.
Sure. So we've had several meetings. We went over. It's MKM's document here states that the bids were submitted on March first. The little bid from Dan Cullen was one million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. We've reviewed that with the administration and with Zach from MKM. And after much deliberation, good deliberation, I feel like the recommendation of the committee is that this bid be awarded. Tonight to Dan Coe.
So since it comes from a committee, I'll that'll be in the form of a motion.
I second.
So there's a motion and a second to follow the MKM and administrative recommendation for award the bid. To Dan Coe Construction, the amount of one billion, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand for the North Park Library renovation project. Any other discussion?
I do have a question.
Okay.
I did want to see about the estimate for the amount of contingency and also the soft costs and the FFNE.
I tried to get the FFNE cost from Zach broken out, but when we were originally looking at this bond, we had a. Estimate for FFNE for the three total projects, the total projects, and that was about, I believe it was four hundred and fifty thousand. And so I couldn't pare down that. I left him a voicemail, but I couldn't get it.
I think the four hundred and fifty thousand is what we had discussed in our meeting.
Yes.
But I didn't know that. Okay, so they haven't been able to break it down.
Now, I haven't broke it down yet. I put in a call to him this afternoon. He may be traveling and I did not get a return call.
Okay, and was the contingency, I couldn't recall, was that a percentage of the award?
Usually twenty percent to make sure we don't go over the twenty percent by state law. Yeah.
Okay.
And the soft cost to date for the issuance of that bond was ninety-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And then administrative cost since the issuance to date is three hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Again, we don't have some of the various soft costs dollars, including we do a builder's risk insurance. On each location, so we would not know that for North Park, let alone Central and Oakland that's in the current project. And of course, any legal fees that we.
So do we track those as we're going through them projects? Are they paid from the bond or do we pay them from like an operations fund and then reimburse ourselves?
So the issuance cost, we pay them ourselves and get reimbursed, but the administrative cost, we, since we have the bond proceeds already, we pay directly from the bonds.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Good job, team. Finance report. Laura.
In your package, you'll see the appropriations report for the month end of February twenty, actually, I should say twenty ninth. Our accounting system apparently doesn't like leap years. And we have a balance at the end of the month of February, fourteen million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-eight cents. Or the approximation of eighty-six percent of our budget left for the year. If we were to expend it a twelfth at a time, we would be down to eighty-two percent. So we're fairly close for this time of year because normally. We have a significant amount of expenses later in the year than we do at the beginning of the year. So. We're doing a better job of getting bills paid out earlier in the year. That also is attributed to the encumbrances you see in the middle of the page, that hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. We usually don't have all those encumbrances. Those almost always typically come in at the beginning of the year, and that's why we encumber them. So. So we're in good shape.
So you're comfortable with it?
Yes.
You said, you said normally.
Yes.
It would look one way, and we have all the expenses towards the end of the year, and we're on target right now. So if that were to come true again this year, we would be in bad shape.
Correct, but.
Figured that out on my own.
We're making an effort to spend more pro-rata.
Yes, yes.
So you're comfortable, we're doing a better job of giving it up month to month and getting things paid timely.
Yes, the other thing attributing to us expending almost on a one-twelfth balance is that we're almost fully staffed at all times. We'll have a handful of positions that are vacant, but they don't stay vacant for very long because we. Our HR department's done a good job of getting people hired, and those vacancies fill in a timely manner instead of letting them sit open and vacant for months at a time. The investment reports to date. For all four funds that are invested in our state investment pool of Trust Indiana is thirteen million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars. You can see there the withdrawals out of our operating funds to offset the cost of payroll, the benefit checks that. Come out at the end of each month as well as additional fees, and those withdrawals. Are on an ACH basis, and that's why we keep all of our money in the investment pool because it earns interest. Our check, regular checking account does not. So we keep it in the investment pool, and then we withdraw as it's needed. The average daily yield for February was five point three nine six six percent or down a little over a percentage point. And the average daily yield year to date was five point four oh six eight, and it was also down just a little over a percentage point.
Approval of bills.
Yes, approval of bills you'll have in front of you somewhere. The last month, more or less, of expenditures by the. Evansville Vandenberg Public Library. In particular, you have nine hundred and three thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-three cents in general bills and expenditures. And two paydays, February ninth for three hundred and thirty-seven, four sixty-three, nineteen, and February twenty-third for four ninety-four, five oh five, twenty-eight. I knew that those be approved.
Second?
So motion and a second for approval of bills. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, other business, updated fee schedule. Heather.
So we did this last year. Hopefully, we won't have to do it again next year, but the non-resident card fee must be set. At a minimum cost, which is based upon our expenditures per capita. So it is possible that this could change every year anyway, due to growing budgets, how we spend our money, things like that. That's the reason we are bringing it before you again. Due to the state statute, we do have to have it re meet a minimum, and the minimum that they said was seventy-seven dollars and. Maybe seventy-nine cents, so we just rounded it up to seventy-eight dollars. This is a card that is not often used because generally someone would not get a non-resident card. They would purchase a plaque card if they don't live in. Because they're in Vandenberg County, they would have a card from their regular library and could purchase the plaque card for a fee of sixty-five dollars, which is set by the state that fee is. The non-resident card is only used if someone lives in an area, which there are very, very few within our state now, that do not have. A local taxing public library, so they don't have their own local library. They could come to us and buy a non-resident card for seventy-five dollars currently. Tomorrow, I hope it's seventy-eight dollars if you approve this.
Your motion? Motion, second.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. I had originally thought, reading the director's report. That the assistant finance manager identified a discrepancy in the public library access card referred to this, but you just said they're not the same.
Yeah.
So the, what discrepancy in the plaque card did we identify?
So when we sell each plaque card, we have to record that we've sold it, and on a quarterly basis, the locations will submit their sales report, more or less. We then submit that to the state with the sixty-five dollars that we sold, and then we get a portion of that. On an annual basis back from the state. The actual money collected is then put into their daily deposits because we're required by state law to make daily deposits. So they put their money into their daily deposit. We get that on a daily basis. We get the plaque card report on a quarterly basis. We went back. To COVID and found that we have some discrepancy. We've always had a few discrepancies because. They may put down on the plaque report that they sold it on the last day of the month, but we don't get the money to deposit into our account until. The first of the next month, and so we always had a little bit of discrepancy and we can track those, but there were some discrepancies that we could not attribute and find. And so we think what's happened is that they're being. Recorded on their daily deposits in their own category, so it might be going to the coin op printers or the copier. Fund instead of into the plaque fund. So we're just trying to see if we can't get a better grip on what those are. So we've asked the locations to submit their reports on a monthly basis for this quarter. That way we can catch it a lot easier and a lot quicker. Yes, she did a great job. There's a lot of research on it.
Are we talking twenty or thirty dollars discrepancy or two, thirty?
Well, when you're talking sixty-five dollars a card. At one point in time, we were three hundred and ninety-five dollars in the hole, but then we could kind of figure out. And it was all based on COVID because we weren't really selling stuff. We weren't making deposits on a daily basis when we were closed. So it got kind of muddied. We figured out most of that where that went, but then the other pieces, like I said. Years ago, can't do anything about it now. The book's closed, been audited. Those records, but we want to make sure moving forward, we have better records.
But it's just some sort of procedural issue to be corrected, and that's somebody diving in and taking money for the trip to Mexico or something.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Just making sure people put it on the proper, we have a, when they submit their daily deposits, there's an envelope and they have to. Indicate what the money is for. So they may have twenty dollars in copy fees. They may have. Twenty-five dollars for passport fee. Here at Central, and so there's different categories, and then we record it in different fund numbers or account numbers. And so that's where we've been able to find some of those discrepancies. But we wanted to make sure we're catching them quicker, and that that particular fund is not in the. In the negative, once we send the money to the state at the end of each quarter.
Additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So noted, motion carries. Sabrina?
I think she's delighted.
By any wise, I want to make sure that you voted aye or nay.
I said aye, aye.
It passed unanimously. There's a slight delay between us and you right now, so it kind of, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
McCullough renovation project change order. I think this is an item for us just to acknowledge. It's after the fact. Anybody have questions?
Yeah, what we have here is the change orders. One of these work has already been completed, so we need you to ratify that. And the second one, the work has not been completed, but and we'd like you to approve that, but in the future. We just want to make sure it's okay that when I or Lamont are getting together, along with the building and grounds committee, we bring this to them when we're meeting monthly. To make sure everything's good as close as we can, but to keep more moving, sometimes Lamont and I have to. Make a decision to have these change orders go through, and then we want to bring them to the board to ratify. At a later date, and we want to make sure that was okay with.
And I did let the committee and administration know when we were discussing it, that this is a regular occurrence for EVSC as well. The change orders are brought for ratification rather than approval to keep the work going and moving along and to ensure that it doesn't cost any more than it already does by. By default. So do we need a motion?
Yeah, we will need a motion.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve.
Second.
Additional questions?
Do you have a question? So SO three says existing conditions in the first change, first change order listed. I'm just, what does existing conditions mean? Eleven thousand, one hundred and nine.
Oh, the. I may have to ask Lamont on that because I was trying to remember that, and I remembered the other ones.
I have the original.
You have the original. Thank you, Lori.
It was from Dan Coe. I don't know if this is going to help, but Lamont can fill in the blanks. They have a green area. Where they had a total of thirty-four hun, three thousand, four hundred and one dollars. They had a blue area, option one, new door, new hardware. For six thousand, nine hundred, six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, and then the purple area, I'm assuming these are on prints and drawings. Nine hundred and fourteen dollars.
For new doors and hardware?
It was, it was for some changes that they had as we were going along, like we had to move a door frame. And we had to add electric to a door frame and such for access control.
Oh, good.
So they were just a few, they highlighted them at the beginning, and they used colors on the print because we had three different areas of the building. We made one door frame from three foot to four foot, so going into our certain workroom, it would be larger. So, yeah, it was just the. The door frame that was going back in, they had to change out to a larger one.
Gotcha. Thanks. Any other questions? So to clarify, the motion is to retroactively approve the one change order and to approve the second one that's in front of us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So, so I think we also want to talk about, because in there, there was a request to move forward on how to handle these from the board's perspective when they encounter these. Yeah, I think to, we, we need to at least acknowledge that officially in the board that we are granting that permission or not, or that we have some other mechanism in place. To allow them to report that to the board, even if it gets approved later on retroactive. And so I'm open to ideas.
Do we need a motion?
If it's policy dealing with hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think we need something.
Yeah, I think it would reflect on the record that we acknowledged that we're going to give the administration the ability to do that. You know, whether we establish a threshold or the, you, you call the building and grounds commissioner or the chairman, or call me or call somebody. So at least somebody else can vet it real quick and say, yeah, that sounds reasonable and we understand.
That's what I was going to suggest is something like if it's ten percent of the total project or less, they call you and you get an okay, and then we attractively approve it later. If it's larger than ten percent, maybe they call the officers and get a approval.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds very reasonable because if we're getting to close to ten percent, we're getting to a region where. We're going to be nervous about the project as a whole, I would imagine. Is twenty percent your threshold on?
Twenty percent is the contingency.
Yeah.
And talking with our architect, they said most. Governmental municipal units use within the contingency amount.
Yeah, right.
Because we're holding the contingency, the, the contractors are not, in the case of McCullough.
Yeah.
So if we were to. Sorry. The contingency, twenty percent contingency of the McCullough project is five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
I was talking ten percent. Well, contingency, I mean, this would be ten percent, which would be a quarter million.
Would be two fifty-six five and.
You're looking at something major.
Yeah.
Would be two hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Which these are both well under.
Yes.
That's reasonable.
I mean, I think it's reasonable. I'm very comfortable with, with establishing a, a practice like that, and it's, it's still a phone call.
Yep.
Vet it with somebody else just to, you know, say, hey, here's what's going on, what's happening, you know? So I will, I will entertain the motion.
I would like to make a motion that projects, if it's ten percent or less change orders, the staff will contact the president and just have them vet it and then. Have it for approval retroactively later. If it's more than that, contact the, we have three officers, four, four officers, three officers. The three officers for the same thing.
Four officers.
Well, including the president.
Yeah.
President, Senator, it's not vice, is it? Oh, you are. Okay, four then. I'm so sorry.
No, 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 it's steady. So I think that works. Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion?
One question. When you're saying. The, did I hear four or did I hear three? Are we talking the building and grounds committee or the president? Vice chair treasurer? Are we talking four officers?
Of the board.
The three officers of the board?
Four.
Or the secretary? Are you saying contact one of those in hierarchical order or contact all four?
I would suggest you contact me, if you can find me, or whoever's in this position at said time.
Right.
And that person can reach out to the others, talk about it, and then respond back.
Don't want to contact four members. That constitutes a quorum. It needs to be three or less.
I can email out.
You can send a. Still constitutes a quorum. You need to do three or less.
So is it really a violation? I don't know. Is this really a violation if I call each one at a time?
It would be any kind of close.
I guess because something we don't want to mess with.
We are making a decision.
Yes, yeah.
It's not.
So I would say board president and board vice president or treasurer.
So let's, will you amend your motion to three of the four officers?
The, to the president, vice president, treasurer.
Do you second that?
I do second that. I didn't see if Steve was shaking his head yes or no.
That's fine. So I mean, I think, contact, you're actually contacting one at a time, kind of getting a feel. You're not taking a vote, I don't think so.
Yeah, you're making a decision, even if you're in a serial manner, it's still getting kind of great.
Yeah, okay. That's a good call out. Thank you.
Eric, can you, Eric, can you restate the question? The motion, like right now, I'm not, I can't even follow it. It's a lot going on, so. Can you restate the motion so that I'll know what I'm voting yea or nay on? Because right now, I don't know.
So I think the motion on the floor is that when we are under, when we're taking a project at hand, and there is a change order request. That totals less than ten percent of the project value, a call from Scott or somebody on the team to the president of the board. To at least let him acknowledge it and vet it and say, yeah, we're good with it, move over, and then it would be retroactively approved at the next full board meeting. If that change order is beyond ten percent, then that number, then we would contact the three officers. And then make sure they're all comfortable with it and say, okay, and then it would still get approved at the next board meeting.
Prepared by the architect.
Ten percent or more.
Will you take it to the board? That's what the statute says.
Yeah.
The statute says that the change orders have to be prepared by an architect or engineer. And, and I'm saying you may want to have the change order that's prepared by the architect or engineer presented to you. Just as a safeguard.
Okay.
And that's what those AIA forms are.
Correct.
We'll have to get on them to make sure that they are official and not just verbals.
Well, can't move forward till they have that.
Or they're ratified, right? Yeah.
I think, I think that's understood. Okay, yeah, that's fine. Are you okay, Sabrina, with it?
It's, it's clear as, but it's clear as mud right now, so, you know, if, if the attorney is saying that we're good. Then of course I defer to, if it's okay with him, it's okay with me.
Yeah, my only comment on that is the action that we're taking now places additional controls in place than we exist today.
Okay, that's good.
All right. Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Yeah, I was waiting for that.
Motion carries.
Now, will this be written up in the procedures?
Yeah.
Been the procedures anyplace?
We don't have procedures for this board. It's, when it's in the minutes, it's becomes a procedure.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three Indiana State Library final report.
This is really just informational, so we submitted it. Yay, we got it in on time. That felt really good. Thank you for signing it, Eric. You can ask any questions that you have about it.
I do have a question. I'm sorry for all the questions.
Nope, you're fine.
But on page seventeen registrations, there are discrepancies between this year and last year regarding resident registered users. And I was just asking why, because there's a pretty large discrepancy.
I wouldn't call it a discrepancy. It's a change in the numbers because both numbers were true both years. It's not a discrepancy. But we did switch our system in the past year, and when we did that, it did allow us to clean up some of our records and our registrations in time. I wanted to go back and look and see where we are now versus where we were at the end of the year because I have a really pretty strong feeling that. We have increased already, especially to giving out eclipse glasses with the library card. So seventy-one thousand is actually still. No, we did not. We did not actually, no, we are cleaning up those databases. We had held on to some active cards. That were years and years old just because they had old fees and fines on them. They were not really active library users, so this actually allowed us to clean this up, to have better numbers. Yeah, yeah.
And I did kind of look this morning and just, on average, I checked these statistics weekly using our Savannah product, our Orange Boy products, and. We're averaging probably just a hair under two hundred new cards. This fiscal year now, and I think that's how they said it's because of the eclipse glasses, but it's usually somewhere between one hundred and fifty, two hundred card users. This week was two hundred. But we have an active card user, meaning an active library card was used to check something out, and that averages right around thirty-five thousand active users a week. So when you think of a three-week checkout, it's thirty-five thousand, another group of thirty-five thousand the next week, another group, because we have a twenty-one day checkout. Roughly now granted, do people come in and check out books every week? Of course they do, and do some people only come in the one time? Sure, but. That's a really, really good statistics. It lets us see what our peer libraries are doing, and we're very strong in comparison to our peer libraries, both. From a budget standpoint and from a population service standpoint. That's a really good database that allows us to analyze some of that data.
Thanks. Any announcements?
I just wanted to announce and thank everybody for allowing us to move forward on the bond projects. And also to please take a look at your events calendar inside your board packet. There are a lot of exciting things coming up. Authors coming up, VIP author meet and greets if the board's interested in looking at tickets are on sale.
Buy tickets. You can't get in, you can't win. If you didn't get tickets, you missed out. Sorry.
Did they sell out yet?
It's sold out. You can get tickets for Ellen Hildebrand's reception.
Thank you.
Now, the presentation is always free, so please come to the presentation at seven PM, but the reception before has sold out, which is phenomenal for the foundation.
Yeah.
So.
I was trying to plug the second one. I knew the first one sold out.
The first one is sold out. Ellen Hildebrand's, however, is open and is already selling multiple tickets, so that's a great thing as well. I have one additional.
I have.
Go ahead, Sabrina.
Yes, I have, I have a question. So I've been to a couple of events that's held in the very room that we're in now, and it's crowded. And so the seating, when it gets to the capacity, like people are picking, you know, they're going in the room and getting the chairs from the. You know how they're stacked up, and me looking, I'm afraid that maybe someone might get injured trying to lift those chairs up. So I went to try to find someone in the library so they could come and take them down. I, and I know that the staff in the evening time for some of these programs may, it's not as many. Is there any way we could just have someone kind of on guard to look and see and then make sure that there's chairs or either have it closed up so they can't get it? I'm afraid that if some, because this was an older person who was trying to lift the chair to get it off the stack, because, you know, had run out of room, how we could address that. Uh how we could address that? Does that make?
Yes, there's a couple of ways we can address it and we will, I will say that when a. A reservation gets made, we do ask that people give us an estimate of how many people will attend. Because if you say there's going to be a hundred people in here, we're going to put out a hundred chairs. Um so if there's more, I know we can't make everybody give us the right estimates, um. That should be locked up, that they can't get in that room though, so we'll just double check, I'm looking at Darren right now. Um so we'll just double check and make sure that that is actually locked when we have those room reservations. The capacity I can tell you is a very tight. Two hundred and twenty-three people, it says more than that up there, but let me tell you, that would be no chairs. Yes, those are fire codes if we had no chairs, so two hundred and twenty-three is the actual capacity uh with chairs in the room. That we have held to and have kept people out of.
Okay, it was the chairs were in the rooms, I don't think it was set up for the capacity net. And it was, yeah, and it was a couple of different. It was a couple of different events that it kind of, it occurred while I was there, I don't, you know, when I do get a chance to come in the evening, I'll come. So for two different occasions, you know, I saw people trying to get the chairs and I was like, no, just wait, let's get somebody else, you know, that, that works here to get it down, right? Because I didn't want them to be injured that because that would come back on, on the library, so that was just um. An observation and I just wanted to know how do we address it? To make sure either a staff person is there to kind of look to see if chairs are needed. And if so, just to put down some extra ones or maybe set up with some extra ones so that doesn't occur.
Well, we'll talk to the staff, um there's always staff in the building though, so please, yes, someone can always go get someone else to do that. Um I'll talk to the central staff here as well, but if you attend something like that and there's an issue, please feel free to reach out to Scott or myself. Anytime so that we can take a look at it and can know exactly which event went maybe over capacity or something like that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks Sabrina. Any additional announcements?
I was just gonna do a brief announcement, I did not have this in um my part of the director's report because it hadn't been finalized, but it was finalized last week. At the county commissioners meeting, we signed a very broad sweeping MOU collaboration with multiple entities. Uh and some of our staff are meeting at the Coliseum next week to go through some of the items that were left in some of those rooms. To see what, if anything, we don't know exactly how much we can actually bring back here and temporarily house for us to digitize and preserve. We will not be keeping any items, there will be nothing that is kept permanently at EVPL. Um but we're very excited to be working with the county commissioners and several other organizations toward this, so. Uh more information once we get there, uh but then the team is going out on Monday to really look through that and create kind of a list of what we can safely. Bring back.
Very good. Additional announcements?
I have a question.
Did you have an announcement? Sabrina, anything else?
Oh, no, no.
I have a question, I just was thinking about McCullough, what's the completion date on that and are we keeping to the deadline?
Do you want to talk about substantial completion?
Substantial completion or move in?
So substantial completion is set for, we are, we have added dates to it.
Sorry, substantial completion. Has moved some for added extra work that were, that was put in with the change orders um. So tomorrow, we have our next project meeting tomorrow and we should get that. Absolute date because some of it runs concurrently overlaps, so. We're looking at substantial completion was May or March eighteenth, which is Monday. And I believe we're in the beginning of April right now, maybe the second week of April for substantial completion. So I was out there working all day and we're probably about ninety percent done there, they're doing a lot of the finish carpentry right now, so. And concrete work on the uh east patio.
And so I assume move in is a month after that.
A, a month or two, we have FFE coming in, we have to have time to build shelves and move collection back in and get it all sorted and ready to go. Yeah, we have, we do have a lot of work.
Target for our reopen date, we had gave a very generous reopen date. Tentatively in our minds and in my mind, we're still on target for this.
Well, long run, I'm talking with your mind.
I don't want to put it out there to the public yet, but yeah, I, I think that we're on target for that, so, which is good, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
All right, any additional announcements, questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
No move.
Okay. I was just gonna say quickly, we had our staff development day um this past Monday and it went very, very well, um I thought anyways. Had some great trainings, we had uh staff members from um University of Southern Indiana come out and um do training for us on uh.
Implicit bias.
Thank you, implicit bias training and it was very, very good and very, very well received by the staff and we had a great customer service training. And the staff did a phenomenal job doing that training in-house, that was uh Lauren and Maricela. And amazing training, I sat. In on that and it was very, very good, so I just wanted to commend the staff and uh. For putting that together and doing such a great job and I think the staff had a very educational and great time doing it as well.
Thank you. Well, that discussion wasn't germane to the motion to close. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thanks Sabrina, drive safe.
Thank you, all righty, bye-bye.